So, before we get started, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and then I'll welcome Congressman Stephen Lynch up to the podium to give some remarks from Washington DC. And then we might have to wait a few more minutes because we still have a line out the door, which is a good problem to have. Uh, so let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'd like to welcome up to the podium Congressman Lynch.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, everyone. Good to be with you. Normally, I'm in Washington DC on Monday nights, but as you know, the government is shut down. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I have very, very brief remarks and I appreciate the courtesy. I know you've got a lot of important items on the warrant, so again, I will be brief. To my colleagues in government, members of the Select Board, and Clerk, Town Administrator, David Gagny. I've been through a number of these shutdowns in Washington DC during my time in Congress. And normally, we would be scrambling, having late night meetings. My Republican colleagues and I would be sitting down trying to hammer out agreements, would be ordering Chinese food and staying until 2:00 in the morning. But none of that is happening right now. And it worries me because that's how this will be resolved. We'll be talking to each other and working back and forth. And there's more than enough blame to go around for this shutdown. I'm not blaming one side or the other. But I am concerned that because of the lack of discussions as normal, this could go on for a while. So, in any event, this is where we stand with respect to federal services for the town of West Bridgewater. Recipients of Social Security will continue to receive their checks. And if you're on Medicare, Medicaid, or receive disability through Social Security, you'll continue to receive your benefits through the remainder of the year. However, there have been some layoffs and some office closings. So, what we have been seeing is that when people have new claims or they have issues beyond their checks, there's considerable delay. So, my office is really good at assisting on that. We can expedite that. If you have anybody in your family that's in that situation. And my Brockton number is 508-586-5555. So, if anybody is behind on receiving appointments or claims, things like that, we can be helpful. For our veterans, although there have been about 12,000 layoffs since January, our VA hospitals, and we're blessed with three great ones, Brockton, West Roxbury, and Jamaica Plain, those will remain operational and the VA will continue to process veterans' benefits. But again, those delays, those layoffs have caused delays. So, I was with someone on Saturday that explained that normally, they get something in 30 days and now it's taking about 120 days. So, if you have someone, a veteran in your family that needs those services, again, our office has a really good relationship with all three of our VA facilities and we can help with that if you need to have that expedited. Again, the Brockton number is probably the easiest one for families from West Bridgewater. So, while we still have a lot to do, I'm hopeful we'll be able to come to an agreement. The other piece of this is the passport office. If anybody's traveling, they've closed one of the passport offices regionally and there have been furloughs. So, there are delays in getting passports. Most of the time, I'm dealing with newly married couples and the bride always has her passport already, but the groom is scrambling. So, or if you have any plans for air travel at all, there have been, right now TSA is unpaid, so the screeners and all that, I'm not sure how long they'll hang in there. This is three weeks now they haven't had a paycheck. Also, the air traffic controllers, very, very important, but they got a partial check last week. And there are 13,000 air traffic controllers that won't get a check next week. So, that's troubling. Lastly, I'm holding our Academy Day on Sunday, this Sunday, at 10:00 AM. This is the, it's at Braintree Town Hall at 10 o'clock in the morning. This is for any of our young people who are interested in attending any of our military academies. I'll have representatives there from West Point, obviously the Naval Academy. I'll have personnel there from the Coast Guard and Air Force Academies, the Merchant Marine, as well as Mass Maritime. Normally, we'll be able to get some, we ask to have some cadets come back so that they can talk to the, mostly high school kids. But we've had them as young as grade level kids, grammar school kids, come, you know, just to find out what it's all about. So, and anyway, that's going on at Braintree Town Hall on Sunday. As always, thank you for the courtesy you've extended me. It's an honor for me to represent you in Washington DC. May God bless West Bridgewater and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you. I have a town meeting in about a half hour in Walpole, so I apologize, I won't be able to stay for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. The time is now 6:10. We're gonna start the special town meeting and we're gonna start with the town clerk reading the warrant.
Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School in said town on October 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and then there to act upon the following articles to wit. Pursuant to within the warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the time and place within mention by posting 15 attested copies, five attested copies within warrant at various locations throughout Precinct 1 and 2, 14 days at least before the time of holding the, for said special town meeting. Brian A. O'Connelly III, Constable of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna start with the articles. Article 1, and that is presented by... Sorry, there's a lot of pages here. Hugh Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't think so.
I think it's on. Just hold it closer.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 2.0 definitions, Section 4.4 table of use regulations, Section 6.2.4 accessory dwelling units, and Section 7.2 site plan as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee? Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
So would. This is the ADU, which is accessory dwelling units. It's something came, it's already in our zoning bylaw, but it's been some changes in it. And that's why we have these amendments. And it's basically just to bring it in compliance with some of the changes. It pertains to, like, one of the things is we're not allowing it in the business and industrial zone. So, it's only gonna be in the residential zone. But what it is, is an ADU, you're allowed to build a, you know, like the mother-in-law apartments or a separate building. Sometimes, I know we have some in town which are a garage that has been made into a living quarters. This will also allow you to have a freestanding building, but it, they have to be on the side and in the rear. It's a bunch of typical regulations which all of this pertains to.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. I got lost there. You were explaining that this only pertains to the residential district? Or is it now allowed in business? That's where I got lost.
It's only going to be allowed in the residential districts. As it stands now, they are by a special permit and you could actually do them anywhere. And this is, and the state has come out and said that it's, they're allowed as a matter of right. So, it isn't special permits or anything anymore. But it's only in the residential district.
Any further discussion?
So, if you own property in the business district and you wanted to add an auxiliary housing unit or whatever you called ADU, you going forward would not allow to be do that? Or what does the state say as a matter of right you're allowed to do in the business district?
You're not going to be, you're not gonna be able to do it in the business district. You're only gonna be able to do these in the residential.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Ayes have it by majority. Article 2. Hugh Hurley, Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws and zoning map to create a new MBTA multifamily housing district overlay and make associated amendments as printed on the warrant.
I hear a second. Finance Committee?
Voted unanimously to recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the MBTA zoning, the, I know everybody's heard about it a lot. It's been in the courts, it's been in the news. And the state has, for lack of a better word, mandated that we do this. We really don't have any choice. They've taken it to court.
Please direct comments to the moderator. We'll let him finish presenting and then you can bring it to the microphone, please. Thank you.
And it's a, it's a very complex bylaw. The, we have a planner now, Tracy Aldrich, who has worked very hard on this. We have, all we have to do is come up with an area, we have come up with an area which will have the least impact on anything going on. And it qualifies, it's for what the state is qualifying and it covers it. And I urge you to approve it because the state's going, if we don't come up with it and the state comes in, we don't know what they're gonna choose. They're gonna, they can do anything as we are finding out they have that power. So, we have come up with something that we feel will work and hopefully, we can get this in. It isn't, it isn't anything that we wanted. I personally don't like the regulation, but it's something we have to do. If we don't do it, we're gonna be losing finances and the state's gonna come in and they'll do it. They'll tell us where to do this. And it may not be at the best place, so I urge you to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay. And now, we can have discussion at the microphones?
So, I think the most important thing is, where is the overlaid district? I can't see it on this map that I understand. Is there an overhead slide that presents it?
Mr. Moderator, if our town planner, Tracy Aldrich, could, would speak to the motion. She is the one who put it together and she's the expert on it, so, and I think she will be able to add. I am. I'm introducing our town planner, Tracy Aldrich, who will be able to address all your questions and concerns.
Good evening. I'll just give you a little bit of information about how the law applies to West Bridgewater and what we had to look for a district to comply with. We're designated as an adjacent small town, so under the law, there's several different designations as to what communities are. There's 177 MBTA communities. So, as an adjacent small town, we actually have the fewest number of requirements to comply with. Our compliance deadline is December 31st of this year, so January 1st, they'll start looking at any towns that have not yet complied. We have, there are technical requirements that we have to comply with and the number of units that we have to zone for, and I have to emphasize "zone for" not "construct," is 145. So, we did not have to do it with a minimum land area. You've probably heard on the news, a lot of communities had 50 acres that they had to zone. We did not have any requirement other than it be a reasonable land area. And we didn't have any specific location requirements because we don't have a rail station within our boundaries. So, we looked at different potential districts throughout the town. The one that was selected is a 7.7 acre, seven parcel overlay district on North Main Street. So, if you're familiar with the area of North Main Street where Ramco Survey Stakes and Mallory Headsets is, it's around the 685-ish. I have all of the addresses. But the seven acres surrounded in part by some town-owned land, that is the district. It is borrowing all of the requirements of the underlying business district. So, all of the setbacks, all of the dimensional requirements will remain as they are for the business district. And again, it's zoning for multifamily housing. It's not a mandate. It doesn't say that that number of units will be constructed. So, hopefully, that gives you a little bit of an overview about the selected location.
Am I ready? You ready?
Of course.
It's Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. So, this little place on the map that you gave us is the spot where you want to allow, how many houses? 54 or whatever you say?
It's just an overlay. So, it's not putting units, it's just creating, it's creating an overlay district where multifamily housing would be allowed. So, any of those seven parcels... Sorry. Any of those seven parcels within that overlay district would be eligible if somebody should in the future want to develop it with multifamily housing. So, it's not saying 145 or 150 units are gonna go there. It's just saying that will be an option available to those landowners in that location.
So, tell me again the number, if I were to buy all seven parcels, like I have the money, and then say, "I wanna get a developer to put them in," how many am I allowed to put in that little seven acres? That's what I'm looking for.
So, as I mentioned, all of the zoning requirements that are applicable to the business district apply to that overlay district. So, a developer would need to come in with a plan showing the location on the parcel, height restrictions. So, that 150 cap that's in the bylaw is a cap. But what that number will be is likely to be something less based on applying all of those requirements, taking Title 5 into account, which is not overridden by the law, taking wetland restrictions into account. Additionally, if you read the warrant, there are site plan review requirements that are also applied to this overlay district, which will further put restrictions. So, for example, there's a 25% open space requirement. So, all of those things would need to be considered. So, I can't give you a number today, but that is what the restrictions they'd be working with, within.
I just wanna say thank you for your work to try to make it work. It's a pretty small area. There's seven different parcels there. So, to fit it in there and try to develop on that kind of a little tiny parcel, I think we would comply with the state's intent. And basically, if that's the only place they're allowed to do it, it would kinda protect the rest of the town. I kinda am in favor of it now that I understand it.
No applause, please. Thank you. Sorry.
Rick Ruger, 259 Spring Street. I was in the water department for 38 years. I was your water superintendent for I don't remember how many years, about 20 something. But we, when I went there, we had about five or 10 acres of land up off of Seers Street. And we bought all the land to the, off of North Main Street. And the town owned some, but the water department bought the rest. Your zone two, that protects your wells, goes to the other side. When you turn the wells on, you're withdrawing water from the other side of 20 acres, okay? And that's all sand and gravel and it moves fast. That water moves fast. We always considered it that the town of West Bridgewater owned some of those lots. So, we never bought them because we already owned them. It's like, you know, somebody in the family owning it. The water department didn't need to own it to protect it. But that land is all protecting the water supply. And that's probably about 75% of your water, okay? So, if you get pollution in that, you're gonna have trouble. You're not gonna have any water. The other thing is, right to the, with that, you see that green thing there? That green building or whatever it is? Often, the woods there are ways. I found a well that will give you 500 gallons a minute. And I bought all the land around it to protect it, okay? So, it's sitting there waiting to be developed. It's got a lot of ferrocyon in it. But when you're thirsty, you can take the ferrocyon out with a treatment plant. Now, if you're gonna build a great big complex there, you gotta make sure that the septic system isn't gonna be going into the ground because you're gonna be drinking it. You're gonna have to go to the Brockton sewer system. If they okay it, and then they say, or if you approve this, and then they say no, then they, you don't want them to say, "Well, we couldn't get tied in, so we had to build the septic system. You approved the project." Now, if your entire water supply has an aquifer protection zone, why would you put a complex like this in it? It doesn't make any sense. And why don't we see on the map where the aquifer protection map even is? It's on all the maps in the town hall. And you spent, you spent millions of dollars to buy all that land. We bought it all from Jerry Kelleher, Ray Newsey, and that's beautiful sand and gravel in there. And we bought it because somebody wanted to develop it. They actually wanted to bring the mobile park further back and expand it further. But we bought the land before they got there, okay? We took it by eminent domain. And everybody was mad at me because they said I was gonna break the town. But I don't understand, all of a sudden, I heard about this and I was like, "What are they doing? They don't understand what they're doing." So, I'm telling you, if you're gonna vote for this, make sure the sewer isn't going there because you're gonna be drinking it. And I don't even think you could do it because it's in an aquifer protection zone.
I'm not gonna challenge what Rick said in reference to the aquifer 'cause he knows it much better than anybody in the history of this town. But I want you to think about what he just said. If everything he said is true, this is exactly where you should do the zoning. Because it can't get built after the environmental reviews. So, think about what Rick is saying. What Rick is saying is that if you go to the environment to review and it's gonna have an impact on the water supply, then the engineers can't stamp it and therefore, can't be built. The overlying district as a requirement of law does not require that it gets built. It only requires that we zone. As Tracy alluded to it earlier, we know that although the state is saying there'll be a cap of 150, it is not realistic that it will get to that number because we already know that there are environmental issues in making sure that we have to protect the water supply that's up there. That's one of the reasons we specifically picked this. And as Hugh Hurley stated earlier, we tried to find an area that it would have the least amount of impact if it is built. But I can promise you now, because one, you have seven different parcels owned by multiple parties, one, somebody has to consolidate all those, which is gonna cost money. And then, two, they're going to have extensive environment to reviews, part of it specifically to what Rick said, that it's gonna minimize the amount of units that could be built. And that's part of the reason why we chose it.
Thank you for your comments. Paul Prospero, 179 Crescent Street. Respectfully, I thank the planning board and everyone for all the work that they've done to this point. Representative Gagne, I question whether you think that this won't be built out due to the shortage of housing that we have. I just don't see how it won't all be built out. It's really not hard to acquire property in the hands of deep pockets. In terms of the environmental impact, I don't know that there's a better place. I really haven't looked into this very deeply. But given the impact that it'll have on the community, I'm just wondering, with 145 units, I would anticipate that they would all be built, given the housing crisis that we have. What's gonna be the effect on the town resources in terms of the school? Where, if someone from the Board of Ed could speak to where we are at in terms of capacity of our schooling? And versus just fighting this? I mean, this lay down and take it, it just sounds like a defeatist kind of mentality. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Danielle Ross, 325 Crescent Street in West Bridgewater. I pretty much have the concerns that that gentleman before me just had about the school system. But my question also, other than how it's going to impact the schools, is when you say it's going to be, you know, multifamily housing dwellings, is there consideration for senior housing so it wouldn't impact the schools? Or is it just going to be housing for families? Because again, the schools concern me. I don't have children in school, but as a townie of five generations, I am concerned about the way the town is going about things. And I would rather, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have much of a choice in this whole matter. It seems like we're, you know, damned if we do, damned if we don't, but I'd much rather see senior housing go in there rather than family housing.
So to answer your question specifically first, and then I'm going to expand, we didn't come up with this. This isn't the planning board, or Tracy, or the selectmen, or me saying, yay, let's have this. I can definitively tell you that almost all of us are against it. I can also tell you, and I hate saying this because when I go to my state meetings, I'm usually on the opposite side on this issue, I think this might be possibly the worst piece of legislation that I've seen in 15 years. But we don't control the fact that they passed it. So to answer your question, the state precluded us from being able to put restrictions on it, for example, in age. Because we would love to have, say, for example, did it as a 55 and over. I'm going to tell you how some of the sausage got made during this process. Because it's been three-plus years. That has been countless meetings with Tracy, the planning board, myself, and many of the other staff. We looked at doing areas that were too wet because we were hoping to target areas that couldn't be built. We looked at areas that we were trying to do 55 and over. We were looking for areas that we knew weren't going to park. We looked at areas that we already owned, knowing that we could control it so we could say no. All of those did not pass the state's review. What you are seeing tonight has already been approved preliminarily at the state. Meaning that we didn't just come up with this with a dart on a board. But to your point, we did everything we possibly could do to find an area that could not be built because of either environmental reasons such as being too wet, or putting restrictions on it like 55 and over. Because I will tell you, one of my biggest aggravations with the state, and I was a housing elected member for eight years, is that minus one development, the state has not approved a housing development for seniors in 50 years. And now they're coming into communities telling us, mandating that we're going to have to take this impact. I think that's entirely unfair. It's poor legislation and poor governance on their part. But at the end of the day, municipalities are political subdivisions of the state. I don't like to admit this, but the state constitution means that we're subservient to state rules, laws, and regulations. They have passed this. If you want to fight, vote no. We've placed a slide up here. We've gotten over $700,000 in grants over the last two years. They're gone. We have $403,000 worth of grants in the queue right now. They're gone. The police department just got a $30,000 grant. It's gone. The town of Milton fought. They spent $325,000 in legal fees. Gone because they lost. I put a slide up here. Christine, if you can show it with the town of Winthrop, please. I want you to realize, and again, I know I'm on camera, but how punitive the state is being in specific to this at this point. All we hear at the state level is net zero by 50. Climate change, climate change, climate change, climate change. Don't buy anything on the water. You're going to get flooded. And the town of Winthrop secured a $1.2 million fund grant from the state. And last year's storm, because the wall was not finished because the state took the money away, Winthrop got flooded. And I don't know this to be true, but I read it, that apparently the DPW, in their quest to fill the gap, lost a piece of machinery into the ocean. Think about that. If you want to vote no, Jeff has already said to me, we've got to find a legal fund of hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend it. But multiple communities have fought it. Everybody has lost. The Supreme Judicial Court, highest court in the state of Massachusetts, ruled on this in February or March. And not only ruled that it's lawful, gave additional authority to the Attorney General's office to be able to enforce through civil penalties onto municipalities. We don't know what that means. It is not in statute. But we have it up there on the board, and you can read it. It is directly a quote from her letter that she has sent to us and other towns that are not compliant at this point. We will engage in civil enforcement against the town. So not only do you lose grants, not only will you lose a lot of money to the attorneys, which, I'm sorry, that's him. There's no avenue of winning at this point except to feel good that we voted against it. I don't like the law. I'm not advocating to you it's a good one. I'm not even advocating that I want you to vote yes. But if you vote no, that's what you're looking at. And I'm sorry that we can't put the restrictions, as the lady just said, we would have loved to have. We tried it, it couldn't work.
Any further discussion?
Donna Connerdy, 5 Bayberry Road. Tracy, unfortunately, I don't have access to my internet. I read all of the other towns fighting this. I read all of the concessions that the state has agreed to. Listening to fear and what, oh, they're going to take our money away, that's, those tactics aren't going to work. We do have an opportunity to take our stand in this. We know our infrastructure in this town is a disgrace. We know the construction we see going on is not being controlled. We have a zoning board. I'm not sure what they're enforcing. Those are topics that can be taken up at another time. But this can be fought. We definitely can try to have it mitigated, and we shouldn't just
No applause, please.
sit back and take it. Because other towns have fought it, and they have been given some leniencies. And the state this town is in right now, I think we should pursue that. Thank you.
Okay. Jenny Williams, 47 Tiffany Circle. Anybody who knows me even a little bit knows how much I hate building in this town. I was so mad at the planning board. They got the McMansions on Crescent Street. They got the Lincoln Street new intersection. That's a horror show, I know that. But the infrastructure in this town is not that bad, I don't think. I'm out and about in the town quite often. But you know, when the planning board or somebody says, it's a public hearing, which we went to, granted, we were trying to find out if they were going to build houses between, behind my house. But I have a newfound respect for the planning board because I was thinking they're letting everything in, and this is not going to be a small town anymore. But if you could have seen the look on their faces when they said they had to say yes to this proposal, it was like they felt that they were doing the wrong thing. Because it's not the right thing. We don't need any more building. This is stupid. What is so bad about living in a small town? That's why I moved here. But Hugh, I think you did a great job with us. I couldn't hear you half the time, but that's okay. I really think, in that meeting, which everyone, a lot of people should have gone, there were four people there. In that meeting, the word bullying was used, and that is entirely what they're doing now. And I don't want to do it. I do not want to do it. This exact plan is not for building. It's for having the plan to build. But you know darn well they're going to build as soon as they can. They are. That's what they do. I really, I don't, if we give them this land, we're done. We don't have to do any of the work or anything. They do with it what they will. They find out if it's connected to the water and solve all those problems. We don't have anything to do with it anymore, except for giving the land. And that's land we won't have anymore, but seems to me we don't buy a lot of land when we should from, everybody knows about that, the one on Bryant Ave, Bryant Street. It's just, you've got to pick the lesser of two evils and go with the right decision here. It's, I don't want it. I don't want it.
Thank you.
It's killing me to say yes, but
Thank you.
You've got to say yes.
Mo McCarthy, 23 Captain Carlson Way. The finance committee, like everyone, has looked at this in great detail, and it's one of those things where you, if I may say it, where you kind of hold your nose when you, when you vote for it. The implications of funds cut off from the state scares me to death. We haven't seen anything in writing, but the inclination, and maybe David could explain it a little bit more, but beyond the grants, it seems to me the door is creaking open where the state could withhold Chapter 90 and Chapter 70 funds to the schooling, which if we want to maintain anything like the schooling that we have now, we would have to pay for it in increased taxes that would be beyond belief based on what the state gives us now. So I don't know if Dave wants to make a quick comment on that or not.
Christine, could you put the slide up that shows the grants, please? All of these grants is what we already know. We don't know, obviously what we don't know. To my knowledge, there are four other communities that are noncompliant that have voted no. It is true that the state showed some leniency for towns who had voted no earlier in the process. For example, they extended their ability to be able to vote yes. And the Attorney General's office now has said we, everybody has till January 1st. They didn't show leniency to Winthrop. Because there's only expectation to be three, four, or five communities throughout the 171, 177 that was chosen, it is our understanding that the governor's office and the Attorney General's office will just get more aggressive. What that means, we don't know. We can only tell you what we've been led to believe. And as Mo has said, we do receive, you receive about $9 million or so per year in state aid. I'm not saying it's all at risk. We don't know. But we don't, we do know it comes from the state, and we are witnessing a state that is using every lever at its disposal to force compliance.
Alyssa Simmons, 54 Matfield Street. I do appreciate all the efforts everyone's been putting in. I know you guys have probably put in a lot of hours. My question is, with the environment, we were talking, that I appreciate you making efforts to pick this area so that we could try to minimize the impact. We have seen in the town that that has been overridden in some of our environmental areas for housing. How do we know that that's not going to happen here? And then also to the infrastructure, when that does occur, and we have other issues with schooling, with other things, where the finances that we may miss out on some of these grants by saying no, does that then equal out to what we would have to make up for when the state doesn't cover extra things that now we just got dumped in our lap? I'm third generation townie. It makes me sad what we've turned into. It really does. We claimed to be a farming community, and that's gone. So I'm just sad that we're looking at this, and I don't feel that it's a take it or leave it. I feel we can fight this, and the more towns and communities that fight this, maybe that is the rest of us standing up to the governor in the office and not being bullied. Thank you.
Under 40B, the state
Please repeat your address, please.
What's that?
Please restate your address and fix the microphone.
Under 40B, the state come up
Microphone and address, please. Sorry.
Rick Kruger, 259 Spring Street. When they, when they came out with 40B, they did away with the contractors having to keep, you know, meet all the criteria as far as wetlands and stuff like that. Is there anything in this bill that says that they, you know, with the sewer, if we said they had to be tied into the sewer, they may just say, oh, it's all sand down there. We're going to let them put the septic in, you have nothing to say about it. And you can't say anything about it because you've already voted for this. I think it's a crazy idea. You people spent millions and millions of dollars in that, in that area, building wells for the last, since 1948, just started building wells out there. And we're still using them. And if you ruin it, you're not going to have any water. This is crazy. This is the stupidest thing I ever heard of. I can't believe it.
Tom Lombardo, to Daniel Terrace. I saw recently that there is a petition going around collecting signatures to repeal this law. I think it needs 75,000 signatures. If we were to vote no tonight, and that petition passes, this law gets repealed, we no longer have to worry about noncompliance. If this petition goes to the ballot, right? So if the law gets repealed, we don't have to worry about this, right? But if we pass this amendment to the bylaw tonight, it would take a two-thirds majority to repeal it. Is that correct?
You would have to come to a special town meeting or town meeting to amend your bylaw, so it'd be treated as a bylaw amendment.
If we voted no tonight, and the law was repealed, we're in the same position we are now. If we vote no tonight, the law remains in place, do we get a second bite at the apple later? Or is it possible to take another bite?
Your compliance date is December 31st, so if you were noncompliant, the law didn't change by that date, you'd be noncompliant. So the state would be able to start withholding funds, discretionary funds, grants, as Mr. Gagne alluded to. So unless you had another special town meeting where you voted to accept it, you would be noncompliant.
And it's not out of the question to hold another special town meeting?
This is not an envious position to be because every fiber of my body says that we don't want this. Mr. Lombardi is correct that there is, there are signatures being collected. There is a potential chance that it goes to referendum. There is a potential chance that the state approves it in its current form, and there is a potential chance that that language then would rescind it. One item of note, last November 2024, all of us went to the ballot, and 72% of us voted that they wanted the state auditor to audit the governor's office and the legislature. That's the law, not enacting it. So we're not in normal times. So Mr. Lombardi is correct that there is a potential for all of that to occur, but based on recent history, we have not seen the legislative and the executive branch actually honor the will of its voters.
Hi. Pam Anderson Livingston, 27 Friendship Drive. So I think that a really good point has been made about the water, first off. We don't have a lot of water in town to begin with. And then to ruin the water that we have doesn't make sense. What would happen to the schools could be devastating. But I come up here to speak from 12 years of experience in affordable housing. I worked in, at an affordable housing site where we had I worked in it at an affordable housing site where we had 200 units. Not that many more than the 150 that has been bantered around tonight. And I will tell you, everybody's scared about the money we'll lose. However, I think that people need to consider the money that we're going to have to put in to the water system, to traffic, to the school system. We're going to have all kinds of problems at the school. You're going to have to have another resource officer most likely at the school. But what will happen at that site, I can almost guarantee it. You're going to be, the response that you're going to need from the police, the fire, and the EMTs at that site is going to cost a fortune. Working with 200, they were there all day long, every day. We had, you know, attempted murder, murder, stabbings. We had drug overdoses. We had theft. We had fights, breaking up drunken fights. It was just all day long, every day. So there are inherent problems that come with a low-income housing complex of this size that are going to be, put an enormous drain on the town aside from the school system and the traffic and ruining the water.
One more, then we're going to go for a vote.
So I just wanted to come back up. I'm your planner, but I'm also a resident. So I respect each and every one of your rights to vote in whatever direction you want to vote. I just want to make sure you have all of the information necessary to make that decision. When we're talking about infrastructure improvements, the law does not mandate that the town solve all of the infrastructure concerns. When a development is brought forward, at that point, it will be looked at like any development in town would be looked at. It does not override any of the Title V requirements, for example. And if you know our bylaw at all, there are a lot of site plan review requirements that are, would be triggered. And there are additional requirements that are being proposed through these amendments. So I just want to make sure, you know, if it's a, if it, there's a number of units, traffic counts would be looked at as part of that analysis and those types of things. All department heads get the ability to look at what is proposed. So infrastructure is not a problem that we have to solve tonight. It would be done on a development, by development basis.
Thank you. We're going to, we'll make it quick and then we're going to go to a vote.
John Hayes, 269 North Elm Street. Assuming that it isn't going to ever happen, like you said, in lieu of just throwing a town concit at them, have we looked at any other locations that aren't going to interfere with the water, with, with issues like that? Have you looked at any other place in town?
I just want to be clear. It is my estimation that it'll be nearly impossible, if not impossible, to fit full 150 units on this based on its current design. But obviously it can, if somebody wants to build it and they want to spend silly money, they've got to figure out ways. But they've got to make that deal pencil. And maybe they could get to 150, but if they've got to spend $100 million, then that doesn't make a lot of sense. So again, I'm not a developer. I just, I want to be on record as saying, based on the constraints that we see, we see it's highly unlikely you could get there. But I want to make sure I'm clear on that. We looked at other sites, three years. Every site has strengths. Every site has weaknesses. Every site has to be developed and stamped by a civil engineer. And those engineers are going to tell us, or tell the planning board, or the zoning board of appeals, or whomever they are under their peer review, as to what impact they're going to have, they're going to have on adjacent wells, adjacent land, and they're going to have to fit all Title V requirements in, in all environmental rules. So the impact in that area or any other area is going to be basically equivalent. Again, I'm not an engineer, but the whole point of having an engineering firm do its work is to make sure that it is minimizing or to almost nil, no impact on adjacent properties.
I had two quick questions. One is how much of the seven acres that we're proposing be the zone is covered by Conservation Commission land? It's protected by wetts?
I think what you're saying is like how much is upland versus not upland?
How much does the Conservation Commission have a say on? They have regulations. I mean, is it wetlands? Is it designated wetlands? Of that seven acres, I'll bet you because of where it is, that three or four of those acres are potentially impacted. Thank you, Tim.
Tim Hay, 235 South Street. I'm also your conservation agent in town. And I would say it's 50% plus would be jurisdictional. Before you go on, I also want to say, as much as, I hate this as much as everybody else, we're driving the bus. If the state comes in after we say no, January 1st, and picks a site, those of you that love the open space and love the character, the state's going to look for big, wide, open spaces. Those fields that are left on East Street, on Bryant Street, those are going to be looked at first. They're open spaces. They're big. They can be developed. And the state's going to tell you where they want it put, and they'll put it there. As much as I hate it, I'm hoping that you say yes to this.
I hate it too, but I'm looking at the risk we're taking on as a town. And if we vote no, how much money do we as a town have to fight this in court, the legal battles? And what will that legal battle dollar value look like? Are we going to be back here for another special town meeting to raise our budget for $2.5 million to fight this? We can't afford it. That's what I'm looking at as a risk. Seven acres, my lot, and my house is built on is an acre and a quarter. An acre and a quarter. To put seven of those lots on North Main Street, I don't see it happening. And, and if it's 50% covered by wetlands, we're never going to get more than 30 houses in there or 30 plots or a room to build 30? The risk of doing that and saying yes is way lower than the risk of saying no, and then we're on the hook for paying all the legal bills. The Finance Committee is right on this. They voted unanimously for it, and I'm for it too because it protects our risk.
So I just wanted to address the low-income housing. This is not mandated to be low-income housing. That is not part of this regulation. It's, sorry, it's not mandated to be low-income housing. That has nothing to do with this, this, this bylaw. And the other thing is about the civil penalties that we might be subject to in January. We don't know what those are. Those could be daily fines for noncompliance. We don't know. So that's another thing to consider.
Quick question. Paul Prospero, 179 Crescent Street. Quick question. How many units are in the new project next to Honeydew there? And what's the postage stamp size of that lot? So if you break down the math, we have less than eight acres and 145. That's 18 units per acre. It will be built there. There's almost no question about that. So I guess we're only left with one question. Is it better to bow to tyranny or to be the loyal opposition and stand for yourself?
That gentleman that was just up here that said on East Street, there's all open fields? Why didn't you design it down there? That clay, there's red clay to gray clay, 44 feet deep. You couldn't get a septic system in there if you wanted to. Okay, so let them build it over there. They're never going to get a septic system. You got the land, zone it for it. They're never going to build it.
Okay, I am now going to call for a vote, and I'm going to call for a ballot vote on this one. I'll have the town clerk explain the process in just a second.
So what's going to happen is you have to have your green card. If you don't have your green card, you're not going to get a ballot. You're going to go out that door. You're going to show your, your green card to the people passing out the ballots. They're going to stamp your card, give you a ballot. You're going to vote it. And you're going to put it in the voting machine just like you do at Election Day. Then you're going to come back in through this door over here and find your seat. And please find your seat right away because it's going to take a long time and I'd like to go home tonight. You're going to have to give me some time to get things set up.
One more thing. Can I have my tellers meet me out? The people that I asked to be tellers meet me out by the machines?
[inaudible]
Hello everyone, all of the votes have been counted.